Pull the order of the Centerville Board of Education meeting for Monday, October 22nd. Pull the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Here.
Andy Self.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Here.
Megan Sparks.
Here.
And Dr. Rohr.
Here. Pledge of Allegiance, please stand.
(Inaudible) to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion for approval of the agenda?
Move.
Pull the roll.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Andy Self. Mr. Schreier.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
And Dr. Rohr.
Yes. Honors.
Thank you, Dr. Rohr. Tonight, it's great that we're able to honor all of our merit scholars. So I'm going to ask the coordinating principal, John Carroll, to come up to the podium and make some introductory remarks. And then, we have about thirty of these students that we were able to honor about three weeks ago, but everybody's so busy with so many different things going on. We don't have thirty here tonight, but I appreciate those students who could be here tonight to be here, so we can honor them. So, Mr. Carroll.
Thank you. Really excited to introduce a great group of kids to you this year. Every year, the PSAT, there's nearly 1.6 million juniors that take the PSAT test, and that is the National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. There's only sixteen thousand students in the whole country who are named as National Merit semifinalists for receiving the highest selection in depth scores. Today, we're here, we've already celebrated once with the students, but we're here this year at Centerville High School along with the family and friends, honor the thirty Centerville High School students best and brightest. And two are named National Merit Hispanic Scholars, fifteen students were named National Merit Commended Scholars, and thirteen students were named National Merit semifinalists. These students that were honored really represent less than one percent of those 1.6 million juniors that took the test, so we're really proud of our students. I'm going to introduce them to you right now. I'm going to start with the commended scholars. We'll start with Rishi Bhagwalandru. Orwin Merrick. Samara Mizaki. Nathan Wrights. Anita Rhodes. Jack Trout. Latu Pijang. Paige Wagner. Rachel Whitehead. And Brockan Bogans. Our semifinalists are Kevin Billingham. Mel Gennarina. Miranda Ingram. Raven Calahty. Bunil Kim. Tuvain Kong. Logan Mattson. Emma Mylinger. Justin Mail. Jamal Adine Krajcha. Olivia Rolston. Benjamin Thomas. And Kevin Yen. And the two National Hispanic Scholars are Rafael Garcia Rodriguez. And Christian Lopez Bokler.
Next, I would like to advise our Director of Human Resources, Dan Tarpe, to vote him to make the next introduction.
Thank you, Dr. Henderson. At our regular Board of Education meeting on January 22nd, East Unit Principal, Mr. Jack Duranball, and I introduce Mr. Jason Whitehead. At that time, a social studies teacher in the East Unit of Centerville High School as the district's Teacher of the Year nominee for 2018-19 school year. At that meeting, I explained that the district participates annually in the Ohio Teacher of the Year program, which is sponsored by the Ohio Department of Education. The mission of this program is to honor, promote, and recognize excellence in teaching and the teaching profession. Tonight, I'm extremely honored to again introduce to the Board of Education and our community, Mr. Jason Whitehead. This time, however, as the 2018-19 recipient of the Teacher of the Year Award for the State Board of Education's District Three. Jason? Please come sit down. Jason was one of eleven teachers selected and honored by the Ohio Department of Education as a Regional Teacher of the Year for the 2018-19 school year. State Superintendent of Public Instruction Paulo Di Maria said this of Jason and the Centerville City Schools, and I quote, "I love the Ohio Teacher of the Year program because it recognizes powerfully effective educators like Jason and gives them the chance to remind their peers that teachers change lives, and Ohio celebrates them as its most important educational asset. I appreciate Jason's vision and energy and the commitment of all of your staff as you work to offer your students a top-quality public education. Thank you, Centerville, for giving Ohio an outstanding educator who can inspire others." Last week, Jason was recognized at the State Board of Education's regular meeting in Columbus by the Ohio Department of Education, the State Board of Education, and as previously mentioned, State Superintendent Di Maria for his outstanding accomplishment. I had the privilege of attending this recognition ceremony last week with Jason, and I was very proud when State Board Member Charlotte McGuire, who represents our State Board District Number Three, honored Jason at this meeting and referred to him as, I quote, "extraordinarily talented and an exceptional teacher that the Centerville City Schools can be proud of." Well, Jason, you've made all of us very proud, and I thank you for characterizing the excellence in teaching that the Ohio Department of Education has established for this prestigious award, and the outstanding accolades that your accomplishment has bestowed upon the Centerville City Schools. So I want to thank you again and congratulate you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for the board and Dr. Henderson for having me. Mr. Tarpe and I have become very close. We've kind of gone on the circuit with this thing, so I want to specifically thank Mr. Tarpe. One thing I got to say about him, he's a tremendous storyteller. If you ever want to kill twenty minutes asking about the state title game back, I think it was 1990, '91, somewhere in that mix. He has a play-by-play recognition. He was telling me, he holds several up for the state. He's just an intriguing, engaging guy, and you know, what I love about him is he's just passionate. And we're talking at the state conference, and I finally looked after he said the story, and I said, "So do you kind of hold on to that game?" He's like, "Yeah, every now and then." You could tell that he just loves to be a part of Centerville and he loves to be a part of this community. I want to thank Dr. Henderson. Dr. Henderson, I said at the last one, he's awesome to work for. He is a guy, as a superintendent, I've been in several school districts, that you know, when he sees you, he stops. He cares about his teachers, he cares about his students, he wants to know what's going on in this community, and I've always appreciated him when he comes by and he just says hello. Something as small as that shows what kind of man he is to work for. John Wesley, I didn't talk about him last meeting, and to be honest, I forgot, but John, he is a phenomenal dude. He hired me officially, he was the coordinating principal when I came in. What I love about John, working for him in different capacities over the last several years, is he's just very upfront and honest. There's times that I'll ask, and if you know me, I ask a ton, like, "Hey, can I have this? Can I have that? Can I have this? I also want this?" And he'll be upfront and honest, and every now and then he'll just say, "No, Jason, I can't, here's why." And he at least gives reasoning, so I've always appreciated that, John, and I love working for him the last several years. I look forward to building our relationship going forward. Jack Duranball, Jack, if you've ever been around Jack, he's the most honest, full of integrity man I've ever met. That's not just, you know, speak because I'm up here. Jack is phenomenal to work for. I admire what he does in our building, I admire what he does for East Unit. You know, when I talk with kids, and you know, it's tough as a principal because you're never right. You are never right in the student's opinion. And I'll say, "Well, you know, what is it about Mr. Duranball that you didn't like in that situation?" "Oh, you know, he punished me." "What'd you do?" They'll explain it, I said, "What's the rule? Well, you're not allowed to do that." "Well, Mr. Duranball held you accountable for his expectations and the standards that he holds us as teachers and students to." I've always admired that about Jack. The students, I've got it very easy. When I went to the conference last week in Columbus, I was with ten other educators that love what they do, and you know, I'm talking to them, and I walk in and I'm thrilled to be here. Like, I've got a really, really good gig, and I realize that. You know, I'm allowed to, you know, blare music as my kids are coming in and they're saying, "Hey, what's up, Mr. Whitehead? Hey, how's it going?" You know, we'll play a game of Nerf, you know. Basketball's are walking in and we get, you know, the juices flowing, and they're happy to be here. They want to be challenged, they want to be competitive. And then you talk to other teachers in other districts, and you know, sometimes it's not the case, and I think that's really a result of the community's support, the parents, the administration, and just overall, it's the students. You know, our kids are intriguing, they're different. You know, some call them entitled and lazy, and they are sometimes, but you know, so are we when we were kids. They're just really efficient, I think sometimes we're jealous. Now, how'd you figure that out so fast? You must be lazy. No, they know how to work Google. That's something new that, you know, we haven't figured out yet all the time as adults, but I really admire our students. I learn something every day, and I love working with them. Lastly, Terry Dikton. I owe everything to Terry. I've called him chief forever. He's been a huge role model in my life. The one story that jumps out is, several years ago, if you don't remember, his wife was in a tragic accident and she passed. And I was working lessons for him the next day, I was the first call after that, you know, accident, and Terry was very calm and said, "Jason, I need you to cover this, you know, put some responsibility into you, you know, I'll touch base with you tomorrow." And that night, my wife and I were watching the news, and I see it come on, and I see a car that, you know, obviously had been crumpled, and I knew that was his car, that was his wife, and you know, they say, you know, the passenger hasn't been announced, but she passed at the scene, so I know, you know, early. And I remember it was Mr. Chirillo, I'll never forget the day he comes the next day, and I was like, "I don't know you, you don't know me, but something happened with Terry Dikton, and you need to call him." I think he called maybe Coach Allery, and there was some communication, but Terry went through a very difficult time. And what I remember about that is he comes back two days later, it's right before Thanksgiving break, around that time period, and our kids are hitting, and you know, kids don't know how to handle something like that. I mean, nobody knows how to handle something like that. And Terry walks into the barn, and it's just eerily quiet, and Terry gets everybody around, and you know, you're thinking a man's going to break down, as he probably should, but Terry said, "I want you all to go home right now, I want you to forget about baseball, go hug your mom, you know, shake your dad's hand, tell everybody in your life that you love, that you love them, because sometimes they're not going to be there. And I want you guys to have a great holiday, and I'll see you guys next week." That's the message that dude's sharing after he loses the love of his life. And then the kids walk out, and I don't know what to say, and I'm there, and he says, "Jason, I want you to leave right now." He hands me $20 and says, "Take Amy out to dinner and take her to a movie. I want you to tell her how much you love her." And like, that's the type of people I work with here. Like, my gig is good. You know, the Teacher of the Year thing, it's very, very humbling, and I appreciate it, but you know, I should be giving you guys an award. The community, it's awesome to work for, I'm raising my kids here, I look forward to being a part of this, but you know, I wanted to specifically thank those people, specifically Terry Dikton, for what he did for me. So, we didn't always agree, we butted heads quite a bit, but now looking back, you know, he was probably a lot more right than he was wrong in a lot of cases, so thank you again, I appreciate it, and I look forward to working with your kids going forward.
Next on the agenda is hearing of public. Board of Education provides time, if anyone would like to come to the lectern, state their name, and please leave the comments to three minutes. Anyone would like to talk to the board? Seeing none, we'll go on to the next. Oh, you, I'm sorry, go right ahead. Do they jump up? They're so eager to get up there.
Good evening, my name's Jennifer Lokai. I am a trustee from the Board of Education, Centerville Education Foundation, and about nine months ago, I had the honor of standing up here at this podium introducing the recipients of the 2017 Teacher Grants. And if you're not familiar with the Centerville Education Foundation, one of our goals is to support our Centerville teachers and the great work that they do, the work like Mr. Whitehead. And each year, teachers submit grant proposals, and the foundation donates between ten and fifteen thousand dollars each year to support those grants. And I'm here tonight to share an exciting new development in our grant proposal process. This year, we're kind of opening it up a little more to the public, making it more transparent, and if you would like to go on the Centerville Education Foundation website at centervilleeducation.org, you can see the proposals that have come in this year from teachers from PBS, PBN, all the way through the high school, some of the really creative, fun, innovative ideas that our teachers have for bringing learning alive in the classroom, actually, inside the classroom and outside, there are quite a few that involve outdoor learning as well. So we want to invite the public to check out those proposals and become a part of the process. If you see something that really excites you and you would like to join in, we're encouraging the community to help us make these projects a reality, and we ask for any donation, small or large, will help us make these proposals a reality for the teachers. So if you check out centervilleeducation.org between now and November 20th, which is the kind of the deadline for donations, we hope that you'll be as excited as we are about these grants that we've selected for this process, and hope that you can join us in celebrating the great things going on in Centerville schools. Just to give you an idea, one of the grant proposals is called Mail, Maps, Music, and More. This is a teacher at Driscoll Elementary proposing. The students are going to read Flat Stanley, then they're going to write letters and send their Flat Stanley around the world, receiving responses back, little pen pal activity, and mapping on the world map where all the responses have come from, and learn something about each of these places that they're receiving letters back. And then this will culminate with a field trip to La Comedia Dinner Theater for the Flat Stanley, the musical experience. So that's just one of the kind of fun and creative projects. Stop motion animation with Legos at Klein Elementary. Students will learn character development, set design, they'll become story writers and movie makers, and they'll be creating their own stories with use of Legos, and then we'll have, that'll culminate in a movie day, sharing all their projects. Another one is our Plastic Rivers, Normandy Elementary. We are blessed in this community to have a fantastic park system, and Normandy has Grant Park in its backyard, and we're so excited to see, Leah Gekki is making good use of that resource and encouraging her students to become citizen scientists and go out in the park district and find out what happens to all that plastic in our waste stream that we're hearing so much about as it ends up in marine environments, and they're helping us clean up our parks and use the Marine Debris Tracker app to log all the trash that they're finding. And not to mention all the benefits of fresh air and exercise and just getting out there and getting their hands dirty in their own backyard. So that gives you just a little example of some of the very creative proposals that are online. We hope you'll check that out and join us in celebrating these things and help make them a reality. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to come and say anything? Okay, then we're going to skip back to superintendent's reports, quality profile.
I'd like to invite Sarah Swan, our Community Relations Specialist, to make some brief comments about the new revised quality profile that we have online.
Good evening. I recently completed work with the Curriculum Department and our various school buildings and parent volunteers to collect information in order to compile our second annual quality profile, which highlights some of the components that make up the comprehensive, high-quality educational experience that our students receive here in Centerville. The profile has ten categories, academics, career education, arts, student leadership and activities, student services, staff leadership, parent and community involvement, digital learning, fiscal stewardship, and safety and security. And then in each of those categories, we've listed some of the accomplishments throughout the district in the last school year. Those postcards are going out, some of you may have already received them, they are mailed to all Centerville, Washington Township residents, just to kind of give an idea of what's going on in our schools. And then there's a link to a full profile which is available on our website, so the postcard has some highlights, and then you can read the full profile online. And this is also linked from our State Report Card page on the Ohio Department of Education website. So if people are out looking at the State Report Card, they can click on that link and get a fuller picture of things that are going on in our district. And that is all.
Thank you, Sarah. Next, Treasurer's report. Speaker in.
This is the Treasurer's report and update for items on the agenda for this evening for approval. Overall, revenue collection is on target after three months into the fiscal year. Real estate collection is down 1.2 million compared to last year at this time, as expected. Taxpayers did take advantage of paying their property taxes early last calendar year due to the tax law changes going into effect for the income tax filing purposes this year. Expenses for salaries and benefits are both higher after the first three months of this fiscal year. These two categories will come back into line with monthly budgets as the months progress throughout the fiscal year. A 10% increase for medical insurance rate did not go into effect until January 2018, impacting the first three-month comparison to last fiscal year for benefits. All expense categories are within the budget at this time. Since becoming self-funded for our medical insurance, our rates had flattened until last year when we experienced a 10% increase to our rates. Claims have continued to rise at an accelerated pace over the past year, and a 20% increase to rates is on the agenda tonight for approval. This should stabilize the reserve fund, maintaining the 1.5 million minimum balance required by the State Auditor's Office with hopes to increase the reserves. We were above the minimum at fiscal year end 2017-18, but with, over the last two or three months, we have dipped below that minimum reserve balance. So, tonight, it's worth sharing also that over the last eight years, our average increase is 5.4% over those last eight years. It will continue to be important to determine what can be done to stabilize our insurance, our medical insurance program in the future as well. We are holding table sessions at all the buildings this year to assist employees during the open enrollment period for benefits. Our insurance consultant will be in attendance with me at all these meetings to help answer the questions that employees have. These meetings are also a good time to share information with staff on how to save the district and themselves money when utilizing the benefits programs that we offer. We also have a strong wellness committee made up of a small group of our school district staff. The committee recently held a meeting for staff to attend at the School of Possibilities conducted by a certified nutritionist. The meeting will be repeated again next month. We continue to receive $25,000 annually for our wellness program for Anthem, which is used for wellness activities and events for our staff. Basically, recently, a live health online meeting was held to explain how to use the mobile app for online doctor services. This is done, this is all done to help employees better understand their benefits with additional hope that the Wellness Committee can help the district contain medical expenses. Last week, I released a financial update video under the Treasurer's section of the school district website. This video has also been posted on the Centerville City Schools Facebook site. This screenshot from today shows there has been over 1,100 hits or views of the four-minute video that I shared last week. I would encourage anyone interested in our school finances to take a few minutes to watch this video. This concludes my report this evening, unless there are any questions from the Board of Education.
Thank you, Mitch. I did watch the video, it was very good, I do encourage everyone to watch it, it was good. All right, next Treasurer's recommendations. Going to go through a lot of the agenda now, things we've talked about in our work sessions, even though we're going through it rather quickly, it's all been discussed at prior meetings. Treasurer's recommendations, consider approving the September 18 financial statements listed below. Monthly financial report, fund activity report, appropriations, general funding spending report, general fund summary, general fund summary comparison, purchase orders including statement number seven, approved by administration then and now, certified by the Treasurer and supported by the Board resolution totaling $241,013.98. So move.
Second.
Pull the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Andy Self.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
And Dr. Rohr.
Yes. Next, consider approving a resolution for a 20% increase to Anthem Employee Medical Insurance premiums for the calendar year 2019.
So move.
Again, as Mr. Beadman discussed, this increase is necessary, if you look at the numbers, which you also pointed out, there were three years out of four years that there were 0% increase. So we've been very diligent about trying to keep these numbers down for our employees, and self-funding has saved this school district thousands and thousands of dollars.
Sure.
So it's actually a good thing. So even though a 20% increase looks like a lot, which it is, we need this to maintain the viability of program. Pull the roll.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Andy Self.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
And Dr. Rohr.
Yes. Next, consider approving minutes of the following Board of Education meetings. September 7th, 17th work session, September 17th regular meeting, October 15th special work session.
So move.
Second.
Pull the roll.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Andy Self.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
And Dr. Rohr.
Yes. Next, Superintendent recommends accepting resignations that listed on Schedule A, recommends the employment change of emplo- the employment, no, the employment change, the employment, change of employment status or change of contract status for certificated persons listed on Schedule B for the salaries programs and on the effective dates given, recommends the employment or change of employment status for the support staff persons listed on Schedule C for the salaries programs and on the effective dates given, recommends the employment of persons listed on Schedule D and D1 for supplemental contracts or extra duty assignments, recommends the granting of leave of absence for the persons listed on Schedule E for the reasons on the dates given, recommends the re-employment of non-renewed personnel listed on Schedule G for the reasons and on the dates given.
So move.
Pull the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Andy Self.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
And Dr. Rohr.
Yes. Next, consider approving a resolution for the procurement of building automation upgrades from legal energy systems through participation in a contract of the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance.
So move.
Second.
Pull the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Andy Self.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
And Dr. Rohr.
Yes. Consider authorizing the purchase of competitive retail natural gas service from the lowest possible, the lowest responsible bid submitted to Southwestern Ohio Educational Purchasing Council with a period determined in July 2020 and terminating note later than June 2025.
So move.
Second.
Pull the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Andy Self.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
And Dr. Rohr.
Yes. Next, consider approving revised fixed asset board policy number 7455.
So move.
Second.
Pull the roll.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Andy Self.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
And Dr. Rohr.
Yes. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
So moved. Call the roll.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Andy Self.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
And Dr. Rohr.
Yes. Thank you all for coming.